Order. And next is roll call, please.
Mayor Protem Wall.
Here.
Mayor Matsumoto Wright.
Here.
Councilmember Murray.
Present.
Councilmember Ryan.
Here.
Councilmember Payne Donovan.
Present.
Councilmember Sonmore.
Here.
Councilmember Woodard.
Here.
That concludes roll call.
Thank you. Next is city manager's report with our city manager, Jess Knighton.
Thank you, Mayor, Mayor Protem, members of council. A couple of things to mention tonight. First, we have construction, as you know, ongoing on 66th, and it's proceeding smoothly. And we're staying on our timeline that we shared with the community several weeks ago. And we expect the current closures to remain in place through the middle of April. And we'll see what happens from there. But so far, it's gone really well. Also, I wanted to let you know, in an effort to engage our community as much as possible, we have three separate surveys going out before too long. The first is on the Community Priority Survey. That's the one the city does every two years so we can track the changes across time. The second is on our Comprehensive Plan, which we had our open house on Tuesday night. It was very well attended, and we got a lot of good feedback from that. We're hoping to continue that through the online survey. And the third is on our 25-26 Budget Priorities. And the open house for that will be held next Tuesday, right here in this room, from 6:00 PM to 8:00 PM. Also, I wanted to mention, we have a new officer that graduated the academy earlier this week, and will be sworn in on Tuesday at 8:00, was 8:45, over at the PD Training Room. And you'll all receive an invitation to come to that if you're able. And I'm very happy to report that we are making good progress on translating a lot of our city documents. So the next city happenings will be translated into Spanish and Vietnamese for our population that uses those languages or speaks those languages. We want to make sure we're able to communicate with those folks as much as we possibly can. The new craze is coming out next week, and a lot of that is going to have to do with summer party rentals. So if you're interested in renting one of the facilities, jump on that. They go quick. Let's see here. There was a suggestion made at the council meeting last week that we have a backdrop for pictures and a logo on the lectern. We, I'm happy to report that Ricky and Lan up in the city manager's office have been working on the backdrop for quite some time, although the logo was new to them. But we're going to see if we can get that taken care of before the end of April. So we'll have that and have those pictures so they'll display our logo ready to go. Next, we have board and commission recruitments open this week. So we let everybody know that that application period opened for all of our boards and commissions. Earlier this week, the last day for applications will be May 30th. And then we're looking to have interviews with the interested parties the first or second week of June. And with that, that's all I have. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Does anyone have any questions or comments? Councilmember Murray.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, city manager. A question about, I can't remember what you called the first survey, but the one we do every two years for...
Community survey, yeah.
Is that the one that it's a random sampling of people?
Yes.
And we actually mail it out? Is that something, can we see that? Have we seen that?
Yeah.
I was gonna say, I feel like there was some discussion after it went out last time, and I can't, it's been a while, so I don't exactly recall what that conversation was.
Yeah.
But I guess I would love if there were feedback that we had last time. And I don't know where we're on the process. So maybe that's already been incorporated. But I guess it would be helpful to know what's going out to the community so we can help socialize it at the very least.
Yeah. It's a random sampling. It's mailed, but it's also available online. We can share that with you. The questions are somewhat static because we want to measure the changes over time. But I'm happy to share that with you.
That would be great. Yeah, I think, and again, it's been a while, so I don't recall off the top of my head. But I feel like maybe some of the demographic information, there were some gaps that we had maybe hoped to get different information on. But again, like, I guess, I will go back and try to refresh my memory.
Okay.
Yeah, I would love to see what we have. Thank you.
Yep, will do.
All right, anyone else? Okay, thank you very much. Oh...
Sorry, Mayor. One more thing, I almost forgot. We do have the addition that I mentioned to all of you earlier this week of an item on tonight's agenda. We'd like for it to be item number six, and that is review of a contract with Foster Garvey, with Kenan Williams, for right-of-way for our Main Street Phase Two project. So that would be item number six on your agenda this evening, and then everything else will bump down one number. So the review ordinance amending the purchasing policy would be item number seven and so on. Thank you.
All right, thank you. So next would be the review of the resolution accepting the grant for middle housing with our senior planner, Jonathan Morales.
Just a big bottle of water. Are we gonna be here all night? No. Do you have... All right, good evening, Mayor Matsumoto Wright, Mayor Protem Wall, members of council, Jonathan Morales, senior planner at the City of Mountain Terrace. So today, the purpose of today's presentation is to provide an overview of the middle housing grant award that we received from the Department of Commerce through their 2023 to 2025 Middle Housing Grant Program. That's administered through their Growth Management Services sector. Well, also, I walk through the scope of work that we propose for the grant as well as discuss next steps. So for tonight, and through resolution and consent calendar at the next meeting, we're seeking council support to approve the grant award and inter-agency agreement entered between the City of Mountain Terrace and Department of Commerce to authorize the use of funds to allow staff to update our code to implement requirements of House Bill 1110, otherwise known as the Middle Housing Bill. So as you know, HB 1110 was adopted during the 2023 legislative session and requires the city at a minimum to allow for two dwelling units on every lot or duplexes that allows for single, that currently allows for single-family residential. So the city currently has four residential zones, with the majority of the city allowing for single-family residential uses. So some background, the CD department led in submitting an application for the grant in early October. We received notice that we were awarded a $50,000 grant on October 17th. Between October and March 11th, we worked on a couple revisions of the scope of work. We wanted to make sure that it was aligned with where the current status of the Vision 2044 Comp Plan Project is at. So as you know, we presented draft land use alternatives as well as preliminary draft goals and policies for the housing element. So we wanted to make sure we had those ready to go before we entered this next step, which is to do development regulation updates to accommodate middle housing. So, so the grant contract that's before you was received on March 11th. So this is the most recent grant contract that we'd like to have council approve so that we can begin the work. So grant monies is authorized by the 2023-2025 State Operating Budget under Senate Bill 5187. And that provides for Washington State to provide jurisdictions with technical assistance and funding to implement these kind of projects. And so specific to the House Bill 1110, there's population tiers. So Mountain Terrace is a Tier Three city, which means that we have a population of less than 25,000. So that makes us eligible for max award of $50,000. And that's what we received. In terms of the grant terms, we're required to invoice for the grant through two installments. So that's by state fiscal year. So we have a deliverable due very shortly, June 15, 2024. And then the second will be June 15, 2025. We're required to implement middle housing regulations no later than June 30, 2025. So that's six months after the Comprehensive Plan is due, December 31, 2024. So, like I said, we have two key deliverables for this grant. One is a preliminary draft middle housing ordinance, which is due to Commerce no later than June 15 of 2024. And then final middle housing ordinance due to Commerce by June 15, 2025, which will have to be adopted by council no later than June 30 of 2025 to comply with the House bill. So in terms of our scope of work, we have the preliminary draft getting a review by Planning Commission in late May or early June before it's submitted to Commerce. Following that, we want to make sure that there's a diligent effort to have the draft submittal, undergo the formal public review process, so presenting to Planning Commission and City Council, and also taking it to the community for input as well. So we have about a year to do this work, and we're confident that with the work that's currently going on with the Vision 2044 project, we have a good basis to get this through. So, let's see. Yeah, like I said, while separate from the Vision 2044 Comp Plan Update Process, this is running concurrently with the development of the land use and housing element goals and policies, which seek to address the need legislative requirements. So not just HB 1110, but also HB 1337, which is ADUs, as well as HB 1220, which is looking at providing for income, housing for all income levels. So that's it in a nutshell. I can briefly go through the scope of work. If I can present my screen. Okay. So this is the scope of work that we propose. So action one is Prepare Draft Middle Housing Development Regulations. That's from early this fall to summer, June 15, 2024. So some of this work we've already done through the Comp Plan Update Project. The next key phases will be to do a code audit of our existing code to determine what needs to be updated and changed. The state did publish a model ordinance that's available for jurisdictions. Oh, I'm sorry.
Agreement?
Okay. So yeah, the state published a model ordinance that's available to jurisdictions by tier. So there's a Tier Three city model ordinance to implement HB 1110. And so that's a resource that we can utilize. We're also looking to hire on a consultant group to support staff with this. So again, draft middle housing ordinance by June 15, 2024. And fall 2024 is, we want to ensure that we're having an open house and providing a lot of outreach and engagement on this. We have to do the formal Commerce ACDA review as well as SEPA review. And then we have a final ordinance to City Council by May 2025 for adoption by June 2025. And then again, on the budget, it's just split between two state fiscal years. So it's deliverables-based grant. So happy to take any questions.
Do we have any, Councilmember Murray?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Jonathan. Appreciate, you know, both you guys going out and finding money for work that we need to do anyway. Appreciate that. And also appreciate that this sets us up for starting really early on work that we need to do anyway. And appreciate how much time and kind of intentionality is built into the process. I guess my one question for you is that first deadline is very soon for deliverables. So any concerns about our ability, if we're accepting the grant, to meet that deliverable deadline?
Staff doesn't have much concerns on meeting that timeline. I think we did speak to Commerce about, you know, what level of detail will be, would be acceptable. So they're, we're calling it a preliminary draft middle housing ordinance with the understanding that we are going to take it through this formal public review process.
Great. Well, thank you for all of the work thus far, and thank you for all of the work ahead.
Thank you. Councilmember Ryan?
Thank you, Mayor. Excellent report, thank you. I'm really glad that we had the comp plan on Tuesday night because a lot of people I talked to don't know what middle housing means. They think it's, they got this house here and a house low, and they're in the middle. So they don't know what it is. But that was great for the people to come in and understand what middle housing means. And I appreciate your presentation to help us with that. And let's see. And that's it? Appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? All right.
All right, well, thank you all.
Cut off easy.
Just had it in case.
Thank you. Okay, so next is the review of resolution to surplus and replace Public Works fleet equipment with our Public Works Director, Jesse Hoffman.
Thank you for having me, Mayor, Mayor Protem, and council members. It's been a little while, so. Okay, I should probably put my glasses on. The first thing I have before you is a kind of smorgasbord of vehicle requests here. So I'll try to summarize it all. But before I do that, let me just say, when equipment owned or vehicles are no longer of use to the city, they may be declared surplus and then offered for sale. Items below 5,000 in estimate value may be declared surplus by the Finance Director. Items in excess of 5,000 are brought to the City Council for consideration, which is what I'm doing right now. There's three vehicles we're requesting to be surplus. There's a 2009 Dodge 2500 that has several mechanical issues and has passed its replacement age. There's a 2013 Dodge 2500 with a bad head gasket and a number eight cam lifter failing, which causes low compression. And there's a 2013 Nissan Murano, which was a former undercover vehicle with a bad transmission, past its replacement age. We are planning to trade in, with your approval, one piece of equipment, which is a 1998 Komatsu loader. It's past its replacement age by quite a few years, and we'll receive, if approved, $24,500 for the trade-in, which we can offset the price of the replacement for. Trading in the old loader in combination with changing the replacement from a CAT 914 to a Komatsu loader will save the city $69,892.39 from the requested budget amount for the new loader. We're also requesting to replace one vehicle that was part of the Water Department. They're short one truck right now. That was the 2013 Dodge 2500 with a bad head gasket. And I didn't add the price in there. Oh, yeah. For $75,125, which also includes the outfitting on that. If, let me get to the part where I say it at the end here. At the April 4, 2024 meeting, staff is requesting you move to approve and authorize the Finance Director to dispose of three vehicles, two Dodge Ram 2500 trucks and a Nissan Murano, trade in the Komatsu loader for a similar piece of equipment, and authorize the purchase of a replacement vehicle for the 2013 Dodge 2500 up to $75,125. Can I answer any questions about this?
Do we have any questions? Mayor Protem?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just to clarify, that is on the consent agenda for next week.
If you agree.
Councilmember Sonmore?
Sorry, you can speak like me, too. I can talk really fast.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, I'm kidding. I got more. What is the total number altogether? So there's, I was just looking right on my notes. So we've got four tables, or...
Oh, yeah.
Four tables, and so...
I went table crazy. I apologize.
So some is being surplus, and some's gonna go help pay for others. But what is the total cost of what we're selling?
Okay, so the amount of surplus we're estimating that will come back to the city from auction, we are hoping to get between $18,500 and $20,000. We are hoping, we, well, we know, they already came and estimated it. We will receive $24,500 for the Komatsu loader from 1998, which is incredible. I can't believe they're gonna give us that much money for it. But hey. All right. And the request for the vehicle is, I'm sorry, let me get to my final table, $75,125, and that includes the amount to outfit the vehicle.
I was adding up a couple tables too quickly, and I was like, that's not making sense. So thank you.
Yeah, you bet. Can I answer any other questions?
Councilmember Woodard?
Thank you, Mayor. Just so we know that we asked the question, because you said it's the estimated surplus value, there's an auction.
Yes.
Is this one of those, we submit it, and then we don't have a chance to say, we're not selling at that price? Like, what happens if somebody really lowballs? Is there like a threshold that has to happen? They have to hit this range? Any aspect of that would be helpful.
That is a fantastic question that I don't have the answer for, but I can get it for you.
I also want the record to reflect fantastic question on my part. Thank you.
Is there any other questions?
I'm looking around. Okay. We need the surplus, what we need to surplus. And I'm amazed how much we're getting for these.
Yeah, right? Yeah, I think I listed how much we paid for them originally, too, which kind of shows a good comparison. I guess that's what's happening with the auto market right now still.
It's a good time to surplus.
And maybe no vehicles will be coming into certain ports.
No, not if we have to buy something.
Are we okay to put this on surplus?
Yes. It's okay to go on consent calendar next week? I saw several thumbs up, so I haven't heard anyone say no. All right. So that'll be on our consent calendar. There are, is there more?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, oh, and that's with both of you. Okay, so next is the Kenan Williams. I didn't write all that down, so you can...
Oh, that's fine. I'll introduce...
Our Public Works Director will discuss this topic, but this contract is for consideration to hire Foster Garvey and Kenan Williams to hire right-of-way issues along Main Street Phase Two. So Jesse?
So this contract with Foster Garvey would be valid until December 31, 2026, and is not to exceed $250,000. We set this up as an as-needed contract so that we could write individual work orders out for it for specific tasks because although Main Street Phase Two is the main impetus for us bringing this forward to you today, we actually use them for land use agreements, and finance uses them quite a bit for bond counsel, which is also incorporated into this contract. So on that note, as long as we retain Foster Garvey as our bond, as our bond counsel, they will give us a 10% discount on their other fees that are non-finance related. Let's see if I'm missing anything here. I think that sums it up, unless you guys want to go over the rate sheets and stuff like that. It just make me think I should have been a lawyer, is all.
As councils are very aware, we've had a longstanding relationship, particularly with right-of-way certification. Kenan worked on the issue with the vacation and abandonment recently, what, two or three months ago, near Terrace Station Four. So very familiar with us and our processes, and we think he'll help us quite a bit through this process.
Yeah, and I should mention that their firm also took care of Main Street One, the right-of-way from that. And the reason we're bringing this forward to you, or I am bringing this forward to you with the city manager, is the project team for Main Street Phase Two specifically requested the use of these services and due to the expedited timeline of that project.
Mayor Protem?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. To clarify that, we'll also be on the consent calendar for next week. Very good. Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, thank you.
Well, thank you.
Well, we're halfway through, and it's not even 7:30.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next is the review of the ordinance amending purchasing policy with our city manager.
Thank you, Mayor, Mayor Protem, members of council. This is an updated purchasing policy. We added a few things. There hasn't really been any substantial changes from what council has approved before in purchasing authority. We did add purchasing authority separately for our deputy city manager that is above the department directors, what the department directors currently have, but below my purchasing authority that has been, I was adopted, I believe, in 2019. So a couple of the changes that you'll see here. One, it's updated for easier readability. So make sure that people are able to locate the instances, you know, whatever they need to purchase, whether that's architectural engineering services, which have a different set of requirements than Public Works purchasing. It clarifies that any purchases over $75,000 must come to City Council for approval. And a few additions here. We did add an ethics section to this purchasing policy that did exist before, but we made it more robust. One of the provisions is that no city employee may bid on any city property when it goes to auction because we have more, we are more familiar with city pieces of equipment. So just to make it clear, and so there's no ambiguity at all, city employees may not purchase on surplus, or may not bid on surplus city property. We also added a federal procurement requirement, which, as you know, we have many federal projects over the last, well, not many. We have several federal projects over the last several years, and hopefully, we will have a substantial one coming up. So I wanted to make sure that federal policy procurement was in your purchasing policy. And lastly, we added a provision for sustainable purchasing. And some of the factors that may be considered or should be considered when we're purchasing where we take into account environmental factors. So those are the addition, major additions to the policy. I'm happy to answer any questions, or if you'd like to run through it piece by piece, happy to do that as well.
This will be on the consent calendar?
Yes.
Anyone else? Councilmember Sonmore?
I don't want to jinx anything, but I think at one point, we should probably go through it piece by piece so we're familiar with it because we've had issues over the years about policies and purchasing, and maybe that's something that we take into the Finance Committee and just look at, too. I don't want you to miss the game, but... Sure you are. I'm kidding. But it's something that, because it wasn't redlined. I'm assuming that, I thought I read it was completely overhauled. But can you just give us like high level of what, anything else has changed?
Yeah, no other, nothing else has changed. The reason why we didn't redline it is because it's a complete teardown and rewrite. So all of the same provisions are part of the purchasing policy that was adopted by council in 2019. They're just formatted differently to make it easier to read, easier for our employees to find when they're purchasing something, and easier for the public to go through if they're looking for a specific instance. If you'd like, I'd be happy to pull it and share it with the Finance Committee, and we can go through it piece by piece.
I don't think you have to pull it. I just think it's something just to be familiar with.
Sure, and we can go through it, no problem at all. But the other pieces, major components of what council had previously adopted... But the other pieces, major components of what council had previously adopted are here. They're just reworked, put in different sections for readability, readability sake and transparency sake.
Okay, oh, Councilmember Woodard?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to say, I wanted to applaud, I'm sure we all do, the ethics code, you cleaned up in there. I think that was a very wise decision, especially after, on the heels of talking about blown gaskets. I might still know something about that truck that makes it valuable, and da-da-da-da. So I appreciate that's in there. That means that city council can't ask, we can't go in, once we find out that it's a, we could lowball a bid, and then we couldn't go and turn around and bid ourselves. So it's important clarification.
I have seen that happen, and want to make sure that we avoid that, not here. But I'd be very clear, I have seen it happen, not here.
And it goes for bonds, too.
Yeah, there's a lot of things. So, as all of you, or many of you know, one of the things that's very important to me, and I think the entire organization, is ethics, and making sure we do everything above board, and when we make a mistake, we acknowledge it and do better. But we wanted to get this in here, just so everybody's aware of it. There can be no question, so.
Okay. All right. Oh, not here. Okay, so now we can, that, that, I just had it here. It's gonna be on the consent calendar.
It'll be on consent, and just to make sure I'm clear, we will put this on consent for your next meeting, but this will be a component of next finance meeting, just so we can go through it piece by piece. Okay.
Okay. All right, so you have several more here. So next is the review ordinance, review the ordinance amending the public comment policy.
I tried to skip one. So, public comment, yes. So basically, what this, what this does is council adopted a protocol manual earlier, sorry, in 2023. It's already 2024, but what this does is update the comment policy that is part of your adopted code to match what is in the protocol manual. It's, there are no other changes other than, other than that. We're just matching up with council previously adopted, and ensuring internal consistency among adopted documents. And happy to answer any questions.
Does anyone have anything? I just wanted to add that the last Snove County mayor's meeting, apparently other cities have gotten Zoom bombed, and have now restricted people to come. But then I told them what we did, and they said, no, you gotta, you gotta do, if you do that for, for, if you have to sign up ahead of time for Zoom, then you have to sign up ahead of time for live. And I, and that's in, then that's in the AWC protocols. And I went, well, we're not doing it that way. But anyways, I just thought. So there's AWC protocols, and there's other protocols, so I don't know. But I just thought it was interesting that other cities are getting Zoom bombed, and.
Yeah, so I'll look into that. I don't believe that, don't believe that's the case, but I'll verify.
Okay.
We want to treat, you know, we want to follow the rules that we're supposed to follow. I wasn't aware of that, but I'll look into it.
All right, well, it came up, and it was a long discussion. Councilmember Salmore, and then Ryan.
More of a curiosity question, I know Ricky's here. Is there been anything that people try and abuse it, that we're trying to fix with it?
For the public comment? For the public comment?
No, for the social media and the printed media policy sharing. I was just wondering, are we trying to, in addition to, has there been like a abuse?
We'll go over that, we'll go over that one next, yeah.
Did I jump ahead?
Yeah.
Sorry.
I tried, I tried too, too.
Sorry. I was reading that earlier, and I saw.
This is just public comment.
But if everyone's comfortable, we'll move this to the consent on April 4th as well?
All right.
All right.
Thank you. Okay, now we're gonna go into the review of the media sharing policy.
And thank you again, Mayor. Thank you again, Mayor. Mayor Protam, members of council. So, this is a new policy, and it's drafted to ensure that city communications, including social media, provide timely and accurate information to the community through a relationship built on trust. It's all part of the branding exercise, the style guide, all those types of things to ensure that when people see city communications, they recognize it, they recognize the style, and they know that the information that we're providing is factual. And that's one of the main things that we're focused on, is make sure we're selling, or we are sharing what is accurate. As far as the new policy is concerned, what we want to do is, we get requests sometimes to share fundraisers for private events, we get requests to share businesses, businesses, you know, specials for sale on a certain day, those types of things. And we've been able to, at this point, say, no, you know, we're not able to do that, but we thought it was important, and our communications manager thought it was important to ensure that we have a policy to rely on if people don't accept no for an answer. So that's really what this is. We still want to promote commercial interests in the context of economic development, and for things like ribbon cuttings, for instance, grand openings. But we don't necessarily think it's appropriate for the city to share items about a special that a particular business has on a Thursday. And we have received those types of requests. So that's what those are for. We also wanted to make sure that we amplify events from partners where we have an existing business relationship, and that would be events that are sponsored throughout, throughout the year, where we have an approved special event permit, for instance, or a LTAC grant, those kind of things, where, you know, there's a clear relationship already existing. So that's what this policy lays out, and I'm happy to answer any questions, and if I can't answer, our communications manager is here as well.
Councilmember Salmore?
Sorry, number six got me off. I just had it on my mind, because we had an LTAC meeting last night, and so that's why I'm kind of just curious if, because we were talking about how we publicize things, and, and I'm glad it's very clear in here. So, we have so much money, and right now, we usually only have two people apply, but we're hoping in the future, a lot more people apply, and we spread it out. So it's nice to be able to tell them that this is the policy, and this is what we are able to do for you. You know, if you don't apply for that, or if you miss the deadline, then sometimes we can't help you with that. And so that's kind of a thing we were talking about last night. But one of the things that we always hear, and I'm sorry, this is a little bit off-base, is sometimes we see, a lot of times in social media, especially Facebook, a lot of things that are put out there that are misconstrued by certain people. What is our policy on, I mean, I know you can't go to every Facebook post, but how do you, how are the best practices that you're doing to kind of look at that, maybe? So we're just all level set, so we know.
So, standing policy is, we do not comment on the social media posts unless there is a danger to the public, something like that. We do see those posts, and on occasion, when there's a problem, we will look into them. And I'll give you a for instance on that. So recently, there was a thread about the new utility billing system, and how different names were showing up. We took a look at that, and our vendor looked at it, and we weren't able to replicate the problem, but that is an example of how we're paying attention to what the community conversation is, and if there's an issue, we want to make sure we get ahead of that as soon as possible. But we won't comment on a.
We all see them, and it's frustrating not to be able to write back. So that's why I just was asking. And then you guys had the, the meeting about, talking about the water, and some, I saw some of those comments, and I was like, you know, I wish I could just add a link, but, you know, and, but I know we don't comment back, but I did see that one the other day, and I was gonna ask about that one tonight.
So, we do pay attention. One of the major issues, one, it's never a very good idea to get into a back-and-forth on social media, but two, as soon as we comment, it becomes a public record, and we have to archive all that. That's primarily the reason why we don't.
I think what we're seeing is, is certain, certain people who are the people who stir the pot, it's almost always the same people. So I was thinking, maybe we invite them to, you know, so that they can, you know, sometimes they don't want to, but, because they just want to stir the pot. But other people, they just don't know any better, so maybe it is something that we can reach out, and you can reach out to them without going through social media.
With all the conversation about water utilities and things like that, I thought that the last terrorist talk would have a lot more people.
That was perfect.
And there were quite a few, but not as many as I was expecting. But again, even outside of terrorist talk, if people have a question, please contact us. We will put the information out there when we can, like we did at the terrorist talk, and we should do that, but outside of those times, you know, email me. I am more than happy to talk with anybody about those issues and the whys, so.
Okay, all right.
This is all on consent for your next meeting.
We're gonna have a long consent calendar. Okay. Next is public comment. Do we have any? Well, they might have signed it and left, so.
No one has signed up in person. No one pre-registered to make a comment, and there's no one online, anyway. And no letters or mail comments.
Okay, thank you. Now, next is the review of the next meeting agenda. Has everyone looked at the meeting agenda with our long consent agenda calendar?
So, Mayor, I do notice that the contract with Foster Garvey is not on the consent calendar on this version, but it will be added.
But it will be by the time.
Yes.
Okay. Okay, then next is council comments. Does anyone have any council comments? Oh, I see that somebody is going to.
That's some hat.
Councilmember Woodard?
Thank you, Mayor. I thought, in honor of the day, and if you somehow have missed, that the greatest sport on the planet has started back up today in this country, I don't know what you're doing. I thought I would read to you all Ernest Thayer's Casey at the Bat. No, I'm not gonna do you like that. Another time, but truly want to say, there we go.
Well, we have, I think this year, we also have several people's birthdays on council nights, so. It's, doggone it. I saw, or, Councilmember Ryan?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to say, I'm really happy to hear that we have a new police officer to join our force, and especially giving our national problems. And I'm excited, because it makes me sleep better at night. Thank you.
Having a fully-staffed police department is not something many other communities in the area or the state enjoy, so we are very proud of them.
Ours hasn't been like that consistently for a long time, so this is great. Okay, anyone else? Councilmember, oh, first of all, Payne Donovan first, and then.
Then we'll, all right, thank you, Madam Mayor. Just wanted to highlight that I will very likely be remote for our meeting next week, and would request a, and then the following week, I'll give dates here, the following week, which is April 11th, I will be requesting an absence for that meeting. Otherwise, thank you in advance.
Mayor Protam?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I hope you all know that I am the first to stand up and say that we should be celebrating all cultures, and just as we have been recognized and celebrating Ramadan, we should also be recognizing and celebrating Holy Week, culminating Easter this Sunday, so I wish everybody a very happy Easter weekend.
Thank you. Councilmember Ryan?
Thank you, Mayor. I was thinking, in April, third week, on Thursday, 18th, we have a Snove County Center, Cities and Towns Dinner. I'm wondering, we're just gonna have a couple people go, and then we have a regular meeting?
No, we've canceled the meeting.
Well, it is still on the calendar, but only in case of emergency. So we're holding that on the calendar right now, just in case something happens, but the intention is to cancel that meeting. We've kept it open, and nothing is on the agenda at this time.
Good, I just don't want to be in trouble. Thank you.
I've signed up. I think Mayor Protam has signed up.
Well, I, thank you.
Councilmember Murray?
Thank you, Mayor. Since Councilmember Payne Donovan was so good to point out upcoming schedule impacts, I will also be likely remote next week, although potentially not, not available. So, I will, I will keep you updated, but hopefully remote.
Okay.
Three strikes, you're out.
Sorry to keep it going. But the same night on April 18th, which is the Snove County Cities and Towns meeting, at 4 o'clock, I just recognized that at Trinity Lutheran Church, we're gonna have the Linwood Neighborhood Center groundbreaking, and that's at 4 o'clock. Then 5:00 on is the meeting, and I think 6:00 is dinner. But I just wanted to throw that, so you can put that on your calendar. Thank you.
So that's 4:00 PM. I looked for the invite, and I don't know if I deleted it, or.
We can resend that.
Okay.
Yeah.
Sometimes your fingers are a little bit too fast when you're, when you're trying to, to do something, and then you press delete instead. Okay, so if anyone doesn't have any more, anything, then we're gonna adjourn the meeting. Thank you, we're adjourned.
Go, Mayor.